...painting of the dome, redoing the seats, redoing the at curtain, repainting the lobby. But they also did some infrastructure work. They put some air conditioning for the theater. They did some lighting. They did a little bit with the sound system and other things as well. But that was a multi-year project to do this. They didn't do it all at once. It wasn't like there was a huge capital campaign where they raised all their money and just did it. It stretched out for a number of years. And that, over time, that just results in donor and project fatigue and people start to lose interest and the whole process starts to dwindle. And that's what we found with the restoration project. Because it did take a number of years to do that. One of the last things that the Ramsdale Restoration Project did was establish an endowment fund at the Manistee County Community Foundation. And Mike handed out a sheet here which showed the current balances. So as of 2031, we had $62,000 in an endowment fund at the Manistee County Community Foundation. And that fund is to be used only for maintaining the work that was done by the restoration project. And so there's an annual allotment that can be used for that. I think we've only drawn from one time and that was to fix some of the heated plaster in the theater. If the board that oversees that doesn't use it, it just stays in the fund and continues to earn money. And I do want to point out that the Manistee Civic Players are one of our primary donors to that fund because they contribute an dollar per ticket for each ticket sold and it goes into that fund. And so that's helped that to grow to what it is today. The Ramsdale Theater Restoration Project a number of years ago transitioned into an organization called the Friends of the Ramsdale. Same 501(c)(3) status, basically kind of a caretaker organization. It's largely inactive at this time. It files its annual reports. And the whole idea for that was to transition from restoration into operational, generating money for operations, generating money for endowment. Those are the two big pieces. And so it's there, but it's not really doing much of anything right at this point in time. We also want to talk about a couple of other projects that happened after the main part of the restoration. And that was primarily the roof and the heating and cooling system here at the Ramsdale. There was a significant amount of deferred maintenance in both of those areas. Even though the roof had been replaced back in the eighties, they have a limited lifespan. And the HVAC system was a hybrid. There was a old steam boiler system and you can see the radiators over here behind you are up for, just looks only, but that was how the whole building was heated, was with steam. And then when they did, they also had a hot water system on one half of the building as well as a new air conditioning system that was put on during the restoration. What was going on though was the roof, and we'll see some pictures of that in a minute, was really starting to deteriorate as were some of the areas around the heaves. The boiler here, the steam boiler actually almost caused a fire in this building. It had a pretty catastrophic failure. It would have cost many, many thousands of dollars to fix. And that was one of the impetuses for going ahead with the HVAC renovation. It was uncomfortable for gas. You could rarely rent the ballroom in the summertime because there wasn't air conditioning. You had to open them. There was actually two HVAC studies that were done, a very cursory one by Wade Trum when they were the city engineer. And then prior to council making the decision to go ahead and renovate the HVAC system, there was a study done by Fishback, Conson, and Howard Huber. That was kind of the lead into how many of those projects were done. This next slide shows a little bit of some of the issues that were having with the roof. The main project was to replace the membrane roof with, primarily metal, although there's still some membrane up there, address the dental work, some of the cupolas and the gutters. And that was done in 2009 and it cost a $485,000. And you can see these pictures, particularly the ones on the bottom, where the dental work was just rotting. I mean, there were spots where, if animals had been able to get in there, they could. And it was letting water and you could see where the plaster was peeling. So it was something that needed to be addressed. And then likewise with the HVAC system, that was done in 2011 at a cost of $269. And that replaced the failed steam boiler that I spoke about, an old hot water boiler as well, with two high-efficiency multi-state boilers for a hot water system. These little units over here on the wall are the building that's heated now and cooled. And it also added some air handlers and air conditioning for the ballroom. And you can see that was just some of what the old equipment looked like. Still had some old types of fuses and the steam lines and the old steam boiler. So where are we at today? Today, there's a couple things that I want to talk about. One is the government and just kind of how that's evolved. For a long time, the Manistee Civic Players leased the theater from the city and operated it entirely. So they had, you know, control of the building and could lease it out or do what they wanted with that. The city provided a small appropriation and also some building maintenance during that time period. But ultimately, because of the inefficiencies of the heating system, the difficulty of paying utility bills, it just became too financial burdensome for the MCP to continue. And so a committee got together, and I was not part of that particularly, but ultimately resulted in establishing the Ramsdale Government Authority, which was adopted by ordinance in November of 2005. And, you know, that board today consists of representatives from the city, our partners, and then from the community at large. And that's codifying the city ordinance. Managed by the Ramsdale Government Authority and city staff who have other full-time jobs. So John Rose, when he was here, and Mark Nisa played a integral role on that, Heather Pfeffer in my office, and myself were the four people that were primarily involved with that. And we were at the limits of our capacity in terms of trying to do city program. It would be fine if we were running the building as a red building, but we were trying to increase the level of activity and get it to be more self-sustaining. And so the ordinance, when it was first set up, the Ramsdale Government Ordinance, anticipated that there would be potentially an executive director hired at some point in time and explicitly made provisions for that. So the white paper was kind of a follow-on, trying to justify that position and ultimately council approved that position in the budget and liked this highly. I want to talk a little bit about the finances. Clearly, the city provides ongoing financial support for this building and this operation. But beyond the actual cash, I think we write checks, but we provide a lot of in-kind services. We do all of the accounting for the city portion of the operation here, with that audit for that, building maintenance. It's handled now by Mark Hanson. He coordinates all of that, the website and things like that. So there's a lot of in-kind services that are provided. But in terms of actual cash coming to this building from the city's budget, there's a couple of loans that were made for the roof and for the HVAC. And the total in the upcoming year would be about $178,000 that comes over to this building from the city for debt service. The roof would be paid off in 2016, 2017, so it's only got a few more years. And there's about $102,000 in principal left, starting at the beginning of our next fiscal year. And the HVAC has a longer time because it was a bigger amount. It was financed over a longer period. That will be paid off in fiscal year 2016, 2017. And there's a little over $1 million left in principal for that. Beyond the debt service, we also have operating support. The current fiscal year budget that we're in, there's $100,000 that comes over to support the operations of the Ramsdale. The budget previous to that, there was $107,000 plus a $25,000 capital contribution. And that was for annual capital expenditures. And that had been a pretty constant allocation over the several years before that, but that was eliminated in the current fiscal year budget. That's the annual capital allocation. So the total in the current budget is about $278,000, a quarter of a million dollars that comes to the Ramsdale to support it. This is the last fully completed fiscal year. Just gives you an idea. I've rounded these numbers to show you where the revenues and expenses come in. So we have, the biggest item is rent, and that's mainly for the ballroom for weddings. We're about $31,000, but we also run out the theater and our party hall periodically. Sales are for productions that the city does through our At the Ramsdale, the Ramsdale Presents, the Met Opera, and some of the musical shows that we've had, and comedians. And that's a gross number, right? Obviously, that's not all net profit. We make very little on those types of productions. Our partner rent is about $20,500 in that year. That would be from the Civic Players and Art Institute primarily, and also the Menace, miscellaneous other items. So about $85,000 in total. Our expenses for that fiscal year were about $100,000 more, hence the $100,000 operating subsidy. So we have $58,000 in personnel, $44,000 in repairs and maintenance. And I will say the repairs and maintenance for this particular fiscal year were higher than what they'll be in the future. We had some, about $30,000 in utilities, $24,000 in performance expense that we have to pay annually, and the city pays the remaining amounts in productions and things. Operational costs are about $21,000 and some annual capital expenses of about $90,000 there. This is for the calendar year 2014. Mike had put this together in a presentation he made to council earlier this year. But just to give you an idea of kind of some of the revenue streams that come into this building and amount of activity. Ballroom was booked 17 times, were about $25,000. The theater, six times, were almost $6,000. Party hall, nine times, were about $2100. And then for city-sponsored production, Ramsdale Presents, At the Ramsdale, which is some of the music and that sort of things, generated about $44,000 in ticket sales, but our net was $2,300. And so if you look at that percentage, 5.2, it's very interesting. Mike has done research that shows nationwide, typical margins on theaters for all the stuff they do is about 5%. And so this is pretty typical. You know, that's a lot of effort to put on 13 shows that only makes $2,300 in net. The Met Opera is a little bit more profitable because that's a total split gate with the Met, but we have to hire some people, the staff and stuff. So the net there is a little higher percentage. And then partner rent, I want to talk about this, but I don't want to dwell on it. The MCP and the MAI are primary partners and they do a lot of things in this building. We asked Mike to put a value on that space, as if it was a market rate, because that's the only rational basis for restoration. Look at that. And so the value of the space and time that the MCP uses in the building was about $65,000. And the value of the space and time that the MAI uses is roughly $32,000. The figures that are on the left are what they pay in rent. And I want to be real clear. This isn't to point a finger at MCP or the MAI and say they absolutely have to be paying more rent than they need to pay their fair share of that $65,000. Because nationwide, that's not how arts organizations operate. Forty to 60% of the revenue for an arts organization comes from unearned income through either public or private support through donation. But it does give you an idea, and particularly for the board members from those two organizations, of the amount of the $100,000 of operational money that the city sends over is kind of directly flowing for their benefit. So I just wanted to point that out. And this is nothing. We discussed this at the governing board and the council for quite some time. Earlier this summer, this is kind of the section of where we're going, there was a strategic planning initiative that was facilitated by a pretty well-known consulting group, the Eaton-Cummings Group, Kathy Guy, Lauren Craft. Some of you might remember Kathy Guy's father. He was the first president of Rushmore College, so she's very familiar with his area. There was at least 25 participants representing the community at large, and specifically we had good representation from our partners. We had, it was a two-day onsite meeting with pre-workshop interviews, so it was a very thorough process, well thought out process, and looked at things like mission values, trends, strength, weakness, opportunity, threat in their offices. And they issued a report on that as well. The vision that came out of that was that by 2017, 2018, the Ramsdale is a vibrant, financially sustainable center for finding, performing arts and related education. And I think that the three really important pieces there are, one, that it's vibrant. Nobody wants this place to be losing. Two, that it's financially sustainable, which means we're going to have to make some changes with how we're doing business. And three is that it's focused on finding, performing arts and related education. Because this building could be used for a lot of different things. There's nothing that says it has to be used for that. That's the most likely use. It's probably the highest and best use, but there's a lot of space here that could be used for other things. So that was the vision that came out of that strategic planning initiative. Then it also laid out some steps to retain that vision. One of the action steps was to reduce the city's operational contribution to the Ramsdale by at least 33% by fiscal year 2017, 2018, which is over a three-year period. That's about $35,000 of reduction. We wanted to create and nurture strategic partnerships sufficient to exceed our vision. And strategic partnerships in this context is really broad. It's with our existing partners, it's with new partners, it's with other organizations, it's with other governmental organizations. It's kind of cuts through the gamma. And then also we need to do a better job with marketing the Ramsdale to help drive the region's cultural and economic future because this is a really big attraction to the area. People, Manistee's kind of known to some degree for the Ramsdale. What were some of the major action steps that came out of that strategic planning initiative? One of the primary ones was to restructure governance, which we'll talk more about later. It was identified as a major impediment to progress. Develop a fundraising strategy and to reengage with the public and present a stronger unified image. And those are really three critical areas that we need to improve upon to make this enterprise work. Following the strategic planning initiative, there was a series of workshops held up with the different stakeholder groups. And there was a lot of discussion about the direction of the Ramsdale. There was, I can't tell you, there was so much energy in those meetings. I wasn't able to attend all of them, but I was at several of them. And just a lot of energy and a lot of really good ideas. And it was actually pretty exciting. At one of the last meetings, we kind of gelled that group on four different alternatives, kind of looking at, you know, what are some potential options? One would be, potentially, the council could choose to mouth-bell this facility. And they would save a lot of money. You'd heed it to a minimal amount. You'd close the doors. That money could be reverted to other priorities. We could revert back to a property management model, which is where the city doesn't really sponsor any of its own production. It simply rents the space out to whoever wants it for weddings, to the civic players for their productions, to the Art Institute for meetings at Hardy Hall for anniversary parties. But that's all we do. We don't try to do music. We'll bring in chamber orchestra. We don't bring in comedians. We don't do any of that. That's an option. That's one of the models that could work. The status quo, everybody in that group pretty much agreed that that was broken and couldn't continue. But that was one of the four things. And then the one that everybody really kind of gelled around was, let's try to be more of a unified Ramsdale or one Ramsdale concept, which we'll talk a little bit more about. The group had a consensus to pursue a community-based governance board, to kind of replace the current governing model. And there was a lot of interest in that one Ramsdale concept. But the problem is, we got to that point and then there was just no consensus on how to move that forward. And that's where it gets the really hard work that starts, is to how to move towards from where we are today to a different viable option. One of the things that Laura Heinzelman from the Manistee Community Foundation, who was a part of this strategic planning process, really thought was critical, and the consultants did as well, and I think our executive director felt the same way, is that the strategic planning was nice, but there needed to be one more piece to really put together the pieces so that we can understand what needs to happen with this facility. And that was to do a market feasibility study. And it's very similar to what the VOG did prior to them kind of embarking on their capital campaign to do that. And there's four really important pieces to that. One would be, again, realize the market, including the market size and the geography. Specifically, recognition of Manistee's pretty isolated. We've got Lake Michigan to the west, we've got the Manistee National Forest to the east. It's kind of a smaller market. What's the level of demand for programming and services that could be provided here, given everything that's going on? The goal would be to develop a definitive business model for the Ramsdale. And also, and I think probably the most important piece of the study would be to determine what realistic estimates for private fundraising are. Because that's got to be a very important piece moving forward to move the Ramsdale towards sustainability. And we're not doing a very good job of that right now. And also to recommend a governance structure for the Ramsdale Theater, including how to balance the needs of competing owner and stakeholder interests. And that gets directly to the fact that the governance model that we currently have was deemed to be broken and was one of the impediments to kind of move it towards a one Ramsdale. Where are we at with this process? Well, the issue in RFP, three responses were received back. That's being coordinated through the AES. A review committee has been put together and they just received the information to start evaluating those. The AES and the Community Foundation are both working to secure some funding through MEDC and private donors. And the cost came back at between $14,000 and $23,000, which is pretty much what they expected. I think there's a very high likelihood that that funding will be secured through the AES and through private donations and that, once that's secured, that that study can proceed. And if everything comes together, a little, probably being a little optimistic, I think we think they could issue reports on time in June, assuming everything comes together. Let's talk a little bit about the governance. When the governing board was put together, as I understand it, there was a lot of interest in making sure that all the stakeholders and all the partners had representation on the board. It was, at one point, taught law gave me mandatory because they're such an integral part of the Ramsdale. And I think the compromise was, is that there was council-adapted minds that gave preference to appointing some of our partners on that board, which makes sense at a certain level because the little ones are the most destructive impact of what goes on in this building. But in hindsight, that's probably a failing, flawed structure because, and we've got a pretty broad consensus of that, particularly at the last Ramsdale Governing Board meeting. The problem is, you've got competing interests and you've got partners on a board that ends up having to approve or authorize different expenditures and authorize perhaps leases with their particular organizations. And so it becomes really difficult and it just makes inherent conflicts of interest, which are pretty difficult to overcome. And that's not to say that everybody is trying to do the right thing and move this whole organization and the respective organizations forward. But when you get those kind of conflicts, it makes it really difficult. And when you end up with this paralysis, another rule gets done. The council ordinance committee met and discussed that, the RGA, and how to move this forward a while back. And the consensus out of the ordinance committee was that it would probably be best in this interim period, and that's what we're kind of looking at it as, is to basically dissolve the RGA by repealing that ordinance. And in the interim, run the Ramsdale as a city department, which it was done for, basically how it's been run, that's been put from the RGA, until a new governing structure can be determined. And that governing structure will come out of this market feasibility study, but for all intents and purposes, there's probably only really two things that make sense. One is to just run this building as a landlord and you just rent it out and you're not doing a bunch of city functions. And the other option, which we'll get to here, is to basically have it be one Ramsdale, which is all of these organizations that use this facility and have it being under a long-kept organization, handling the book theaters run. This building is much, much more complex than the book theater. It has a lot more spaces. It's a lot bigger. It has a lot of more variety of things that are done here. And so it's a lot more difficult. But if you were able to pool all of the resources of all the organizations and partners, you would be able to help move that forward in terms of sustainability and also in turn coherent message. So the market feasibility study will make that recommendation and hopefully it provides some insight into that and define what some best practice about. And would that be the one Ramsdale like I've just described? Maybe. Or maybe it could be something else entirely. But the research that's been done so far doesn't seem to identify any other models for something. So what might that one Ramsdale look like? If this is what ultimately came out, you would have an umbrella organization, probably a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, perhaps the Friends of the Ramsdale since it's already set up and could be, you know, pretty easily transformed into this governing body. You would have to absolutely, positively, 100% have an engaged and connected, community-based board. That's one thing we do not have right now. And that's a really a big hindrance in a lot of different ways. It's a hindrance for fundraising. It's a hindrance for outreach into the communities. It's a hindrance because we don't necessarily have the right kind of skill sets on that board. We need some marketing people. We need some finance people. We need a little bit bigger board. That's a real key that I think was identified, not only in the strategic plan, but also hopefully will be addressed in the market feasibility study. It will allow for pooling of resources, both financial and human resources. Right now, there's an awful lot of duplication of effort amongst different groups that use the building. And some of those could be eliminated and people could be deployed in ways that make the most sense and is the most efficient. We would need to increase the level of volunteering here. I mean, the VOG has done a fantastic job with their volunteer pool. And the Civic Players have done a fantastic job with their volunteer pool. And the Ramsdale as a building has been able to tap into those. But there's not a volunteer corps that's just for the Ramsdale. They're not as robust as it needs to be. We need to address staffing. This building has less staffing than the VOG does. And it's way bigger and a bit more complicated and a lot more to take care of. And we need to really address having a unified message to be able to market this place. So as an example, the diagram on the left looks like, what might that look like? You might have one board and then you could have subcommittees, one for programming, one for fundraising, one for operation, one for marketing, one for restoration. That's just an example of how that can look. And all of this has been discussed as part of that strategic planning process. And again, I get back to, it sounds really good on paper. People like the thought of it. But how do you get from paper to reality? And that's where, really, we've had the stumbling blocks since probably early fall, is just trying to move that forward. And we've lost the momentum, quite frankly. So we need to reestablish that energy and momentum that was, that came out of the strategic planning process, move that market feasibility study forward. Just some observations. I think the biggest observation is that, you know, the Friends of the Ramsdale is not where it needs to be. And that requires, again, a well-connected, community-based board that can talk to people, that can sell a compelling case, and can get people excited about this. And this point has just come home and been hammer home again and again and again. The only way that the Ramsdale is going to survive is that community involvement has to increase, and that's going to lead the way forward. And it needs to increase in areas of governance, because you have to have dedicated committed board members that are going to step up and advocate for this place and raise funds and make hard decisions and be passionate about it and be an advocate for it. We need to have an active volunteer corps. We need to be able to get the donations that all the studies say arts organizations need to be able to exist. And we need to be able to sell more tickets to productions here. We've had a lot of really great shows where we sell 40 tickets. We brought in an arts college show a week ago, two weeks ago, on the Rainbow Fish, which is a great kid's show. It was beautiful. And how many people were at that show, remember? Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine people. You can't make it on 29 tickets. It just simply isn't going to work. So there's a lot of work that we need to do in order to really move this, I think, where everybody would like to see it go. But it's going to take a lot of hard work on the city's half, on all of our partners, and on the community, quite frankly, as a whole, for people to step up and really make that happen. Because it isn't going to happen on its own. And it certainly can't happen with a small group of people that we have right now involved. We need to get more people involved to really[1552.25] We need to get more people involved to really make this work. That's really all I've got for my presentation. It kind of mimics the memo that was in the council's packet, it mimics what we've been talking about, the government's board level, and through the strategic planning process, and through the last several budgets. So there's really nothing new here. But I think we've really come to a point where we've got to find a way forward. Hopefully, that market feasibility study will be the whip of this to do that. And if council takes some kind of action down the road on the governance for short term, and then can figure out a long-term model, it's really worth it, it's going to need to happen. So that's all I have for my prepared remarks.
I'm really encouraged on all the work that has been done. I think you've identified a lot of areas where we need improvement, and I think you've come up with a model that can make this a really feasible place. But I agree that it's going to have to be, a lot more people are involved, that it's tough to get the funding. But I think it's possible. I mean, the study and re-looking at the organization running this place, I think are two things that we need to have. And that's a good first step. Any other comments or questions?
Well, I think the feasibility study, there's a lot of good ideas there. Like everybody's saying, we need a lot more participation to really save the Ramsdale. And that's going to be a challenge. I go by the man, I'm not sure else, I'm just trying to foster a lot of interest in part of the program to try to make things work.
Does anyone in the audience, I know there's a lot of interest in this, now that you've seen this presentation and are looking at this?
There was someone hired to oversee the Ramsdale operations.
Yes, Mike Terry.
And what does he do? Does he market it, does he?
Terry, do you want to?
Sorry, what do I do? I do everything from take out the garbage to booking the shows, to do the bookings, taking care of rentals.
Do you have any marketing, you might try and sell? Not just here, but around the state and the?
We haven't done any all-state marketing though, yeah. I mean, we do through minor, and that covers Northwestern Michigan, so we have events go through there.
Yeah, I think it's unusual that you find somebody in this position that does that wide range of activities to keep this place going. They're very dedicated, not too many people take out the garbage to help out an institution like this. But I encourage, I think, marketing is a key, you know, to get these events out there. And I think what's been presented will go a long way in helping to do that.
And I can speak directly to the marketing. The civic players do their own marketing, MAI does their own marketing. There is a little bit of collaboration that the city's got. But in terms of actually what the city is doing, the marketing has never been as effective and as efficient as what Mike has been able to do with it. And it still isn't bringing in the crowds that we need. And that may just be a function of the market that we're in. And that's one of the things that the market feasibility study is hopefully going to take a look at. Or maybe there's some areas that we haven't done, we haven't explored, that may be an area that we have some opportunity. But one of the goals for Mike coming in is to try to understand what the audience is wanting. So he's tried a lot of different things in terms of programming, some of them had better success than others. But overall, you know, like I said, we made about 5% net on all those 13 shows that we did, which is an enormous amount of work. And does it keep this place vital, and people coming into it, and the lights on, and it looks like there's something on? Absolutely, but it's not paying the bills. And that's the real challenge. And so we've got to find the right mix of programming, of fundraising, of rentals, to get this moving forward.
And I see the list, and he was out to, last fall, up to the casino during the BISPO Expo. And he was advertising everything they had going on, and I was really amazed at all the difference. And he did come to council, and he showed all the different activities he had going on here. And I think marketing, I think people will come, but I think trying to get that word out there in marketing, and I'd like the idea of having one big umbrella, that you can really go out there and market. And you're not only marketing the Ramsdale, you're marketing all the others who utilize this building. And I think, assuming that we can get into that kind of model, again, we'll look at that study.
I have a question, Professor. Are we kind of like in a holding pattern now until we do this market study? What should be our next step?
Well, I think opinions vary on that a little bit. And I think Mike probably has a perspective that's worth hearing. But from my view, we can, we need the people that want to be involved. And we try to set up and continue to work out with some subcommittees for specific areas like program. Get the people that are interested in programming to work on that, get the people that are actually interested in marketing. But until we actually get to a governing structure that has the authority to make decisions on how are we going to spend our marketing dollars, and how are we going to do this, how are we going to do that, it's a little bit difficult to get people involved. I know some of the reason that we lost some interest in our strategic planning is that it was felt like, well, we got all these great ideas, but there's no way to put them into force of action. And so to a degree, I think we are in a holden cabin until that marketing feasibility study gets on. That doesn't mean that Mike's not off booking shows and doing things. But at the same time, this meeting is intended to kick off a community discussion about how can we get involved? How can we help the Ramsdale? What can I do? Where can I volunteer? And we may not have the infrastructure in place to accommodate all that, you know, it's kind of got to be a little bit of a parallel process, but this absolutely has to kick off the conversation. And I guess my only other observation would be, in order to be one Ramsdale, everybody's got to give up some autonomy, and everybody's got to give up some identity. And there's a real fear in doing that, and I understand that, that's very real. Because nobody wants, I mean, the civic players have a long, rich tradition, or MAI has a long, rich tradition. But the model that we're doing right now, unless that changes, isn't going to work. If we do one Ramsdale, I think that has the best chance of success. Maybe the feasibility study will come up with something different. But absent doing that, then what's going to end up happening probably is the city's going to have to raise the rents to our partners, and the partners are going to have to go out and fundraise in order to do that. And if the city raises the rent too much, then the partners may need to find a different location that they can't afford it. It's that fine balancing act, and nobody wants the MCP to go somewhere else. Nobody wants the MAI to go somewhere else. So it's this competing interest as to how you make that all work for all the partners and balance all those competing needs. And that is a really, really tough nut to crack. If there was an easy answer, it would have been done by now.
And I don't mean no disrespect, like you said, I would have asked an additional part to that question. I've been coming to meetings since, probably we had the big one, I think, in August. I'm coming, and we seem to be like we're stuck.
Absolutely, we're stuck.
And I'm trying to get from some, how do we, how do we get beyond being stuck? And start moving forward. At what point does that happen? Does that happen? Next week? Next year? I kind of like timelines, you know?
Yeah, well, and frankly, we don't know until we see what the marketing study is going to recommend. However, the interim step that was suggested at the council ordinance committee was, let's just remove what everybody and all our partners have acknowledged as an impediment right now. And that's the structure of the Ramsdale governing board. Let's just get rid of it. Let's operate like an apartment, and in three months, when we get this feasibility study done, we'll work towards putting together a community-based board. And in the interim, we can get some subcommittees working. But ultimately, you've got to have the people on that board that are the right people, have the right skill set, that have the connections of the community, that have the means to be able to make donations, and that are so passionate about this building that they can suck other people in and get them involved. If you don't have those individuals on the board, then you're setting yourself up for failure. And those people, you can't just say, hey, well, you can be on the board. I mean, they've got to want to come, and the community's really got to take charge and take ownership. Really, a lot like they've done with the Vogue. You've got a pretty passionate group. You know, you get lots of volunteers, they're kind of all going in the same direction. We need to have that here. But it's a hurdle, because we have distinct entities that all have their own organizational structure, and they all have their own budgets, and they're all doing their own thing, and they've been very successful. But that model, you know, isn't necessarily going to work down the road. And I think that's the consensus that has been reached. But how we get from where we're at today to wherever we're going is going to be where it's going to be really difficult. And people are going to have to step up and be able to make tough decisions to do that.
My last follow-up question would be, who's going to make that decision when you figure? How do we, we're stuck with who's going to make that decision?
Well, the city can't tell the civic players if you have to join one Ramsdale, it doesn't work that way. The civic players, or the MAI, whoever wants a partner in this endeavor, need to see the wisdom of doing that, right? So if they see the wisdom, then they're going to come along willingly. The only other option, if they don't, it's a carrot step, right? Everybody sees that it's a win-win, and you do it. Or the city says, okay, we're going to be in property management, we're not making any money on our own productions, right, at all. So we're just going to rent the building out to whoever wants to use it for weddings, and we're going to let the civic players rent it out for their production. But we've got to get more money out of the civic players. So what does that force the civic players to do? It forces them to either do more productions, or do more fundraising. In the absence of that, if you have one Ramsdale, the whole organization can fundraise for all the activities they want. And I'm not picking on the civic players, they're just our most important partner. You know, they are what a lot of people recognize as the Ramsdale Theater. Most people who come here don't really care who is what, and what organization, well, they want to see a community theater. They want to be involved in community theater. And the governing structure of that's important, but the success of the building is, I think, more important in all the organizations. You know, a rising tide kind of lifts all ships. But I'm telling you, that isn't going to happen from top-down approach. There's got to be a consensus to move forward with that. And either people are going to get on board willingly, and the community is going to step up, or they're not. And then at that point, you know, council's going to have to make that decision based on how they want to proceed with that. Because the governing board has been working for a lot of time to try to get there, and hasn't been able to. And the city can't force the issue through the governing board, it's just not working. It's that basic conflict of interest, and that's just the way it is. So as you guys talked at the ordinance committee, if you wanted to dissolve the governing board, you could do that. Would things fundamentally change? No, it really wouldn't change. It would be one less meeting that people would go to a month. Mike's still going to have a dialogue with our partners, as he does every day. He's still going to be scheduling this stuff. And does that take away some of the conflict? Yes. But does that mean that tomorrow, there's going to be a new lease handed to the civic players that increases their rent? I don't think, I think that's premature until we go through the marketing study and see what direction we want to go on. But we need to start this conversation, and we need all the board members of the different organizations to start talking amongst themselves and try to figure out together how we're going to move this forward.
I thank you for your patience and that, for getting that question.
I see there are a lot, several people want to speak, and I'm going to start.
I just want to make the observation, I really loved your presentation. I've been involved with the Ramsdale, like, I think over half the people here now, for about 20 years at least or more. And so people know a lot. What I want to say is, I think that's got a lot of things really pegged well. But you're going to need leadership in which volunteers feel like working. And that means they're going to need to really feel respect. You're going to think in a donor, I'm not much of a fundraiser, so I can't speak to that. I think, you know, in our experience locally, we've seen marvelous success with the London Center for the Arts. But London is what? Over one and a half, almost twice our size, and has a lot more wealth than us. So we can't do everything they, you might always need city support for the Ramsdale. But what, I'm excited by what you got put together, and that's deep understanding.
And I just want to be clear, this isn't Ed Bradford, Ed Bradford is doing the presentation. This has kind of bubbled up organically from the strategic planning process, from the day-to-day interaction with the groups. It's being pushed by council to a degree, because there are competition for these scarce resources. But we needed everybody that's involved with all of our partners, and everybody that cares and loves the Ramsdale to get on the same page and figure out a way forward. It's going to be, it's not going to be a straight path, I'm sure there's going to be zigzag, but that's going to have to happen.
So I'm sorry, I have to worry, but my point really is that you need to bring in leadership here that everyone feels respected and listened to, it's really crucial.
Wait a minute, there was a playback here.
I will present the priorities to you, but I just have some questions, I want some recommendations. I will also say that this presentation is very, very helpful, and I commend the council for getting to this. I have a couple of questions. Does the city have obtained grants previous? Why aren't we trying to add now?
For a period of time or after the recession, the Macaca has pretty much dried out. And those grants that we were getting, more for operation, there were capital improvements. And those grants largely dried up. I think they've restored some of them. But Macaca, right in the center, is focusing a little bit more on smaller operational-type grants to bring things in. And Mike, can you speak to the grant application that you submitted with Macaca?
Yeah, I did submit, I did submit a grant application, a project grant to support the in-house program. Did make the cut. Just certainly also put in a for capital grant, for a little bit here, did make the cut on that.
I find there are other opportunities.
I did get a grant from Arts Midwest for 40, or 100,000 dollars. We also got a grant from Michigan Management Council, fully eventful, of course, I have to mention.
Another question I've had is, you had said that you had withdrawn the capital contribution to the budget? Is there a reason why they're doing that?
Because there was other community priorities, I was about to start the budget. The $178,000 in debt service is still coming over, and $100,000 operational subsidy, but there was typically specific annual allocations made for capital projects, and that would have been the issue.
So we don't expect any capital project?
Well, I don't establish a budget. There wasn't one recommended in the current budget, and as a senior now, there's not one recommended in the draft budget that hasn't been released yet.
I just have two further quick questions. You talked about some conflicts of interest on the RGA board. Are there any other conflicts of interest that you see, are there other, are there paid employees? Forgive my English. Are there paid employees on the board that have voting services?
Mike is a paid employee, and he is an ex-official member of the board.
So he has some, so there are no, you don't see any other conflicts?
The fundamental conflict of the RGA is we have representatives from our partners that have to vote on their leases. And you have representatives from our partners that have to determine and schedule for a building that might have conflicts.
You know, I understand the conflict, I just didn't feel a lot of conflict.
Those are the types of conflicts. I'm not aware of any other conflicts.
And the last question I've had is, you talk about this one Ramsdale, which I think is great, but it seems premature since we haven't really received the feasibility study yet. But it seems like we're already embracing that.
And as I mentioned in the study, that was kind of what came out organically from the strategic planning process. But it could be something, as I say here, it could be something else entirely. We don't know until the feasibility study is done. It could be that the feasibility study comes back and says, you know what? The city, you would be better off being a landlord. And you set the rents where you think they need to be, and all of these groups that have passionate volunteers and want to focus just on what they want to do, that's fine. And they're just going to have to go out and figure out a way to raise donations, or have more profitable revenue.
All looking after the same thing.
Yeah, it is, and that's confusing for governors as well. So we don't know, we don't know where it's going. The one Ramsdale isn't something that, you know, was thought up in a vacuum. It was kind of organically bubbled up as a way to move that forward. In fact, I don't think they've got the sheet, you know, Brian Garcia, he's on the governing board, had a really great display that he brought to the governing board meeting the other day, which kind of shows the one Ramsdale and kind of his vision for things that can move. It's a lot larger than the committees.
Excellent presentation, and I liked the concept of one Ramsdale. But I want to speak about the arts and making sure that, you know, that I've been, I've organized arts groups and arts organizations around the state in my career. And I've been in places with other people who have done that. And it always takes a passionate arts person and a person who knows the books too. But you can't do it without passion. And those people go out and grab people by the neck and say, you're going to be excited about this. You've got to come, you've got to be there. And also, we have to educate our community, and so that's a 10-year project, to educate the community about fine arts and all the things that they want to see, but they don't, they didn't look at the poster for the Rainbow Fish. So we go into the schools and send flyers out. Or we look at the fact that we have a lot of ethnic groups in this town. Why don't we play to the ethnic groups as far as things that we bring in here? Bring a cult of fest in here, bring a Swedish celebration in the winter. Those kinds of things have, and other places that I've lived have grown to magnitudes that are huge. I started a concert series in Monty Huyfeldt. And within 10 years, it had grown, it was a summer weekly concert. And they, I spent $10,000 every summer doing it. And we, there were never less than 400 or 500 people at the concerts each week. People coming from as far as 30 miles away, because they knew that every time they came, there was going to be quality things. Heart does a program, they impact their auditorium for a concert series. But 10 years ago, when they started that, they didn't have a community that cared about classical music. Now you can't keep them away from it. And so it's a matter of educating our community, because people who come from the outside are going to come and move to Menacee if we don't have the arts. The arts are there. And by the way, Mike Bloomberg has to finance and underwrite the Metropolitan Opera.
Anyone else that's into it, Mike, do you have?
I just have one more. Nancy did a lot of fundraising, she brings a lot of money out of that. Are you, by being a government entity, restricted from looking outside the community for endorsements and donations?
No.
I know there are a lot of families that have particular party, and there are connections with Ramsdale.
But nonetheless, that's something that's been talked about as far as growing, but we can't. Growing endorsements and that type of.
Ultimately, it would be great if this building had an operating endowment and an endowment for maintaining the restoration. But one of the areas that we really need to do a better job of is there's going to be a huge wealth transfer over the next 20 years, as generational wealth transfer. And that's been coming for a while. And if we're not in a position individually or together to get some planned giving from that wealth transfer that's going to happen, we are missing the vote, because that's the only way, and one of the only ways that you're going to raise money for those endowments. But we're not in a position to do that right now, because the message and the vision of the brand is so incoherent at this point.
Thank you.
I'm curious, there's one comment, Menacee Art Institute. One of the things you kept bringing up about the, how the Ramsdale and the Vogue kind of mirror each other in, in, yeah, in like a business model. I don't think that's fair, considering they have Michael Moore as a celebrity to say, give us money, or, you know, go see this movie, or, you know, that sort of thing. We don't, we have nobody like that.
And personally, I agree with that, I absolutely agree with that. And that's the point of, you need to have a community board that has the right people on it. I could envision a board where you have a corn truck sitting on it. Don't worry about it, because it happens all the time. If you look at, if you look at the Michigan Music Institute, whether you like the hawks or not, they have people like Colin Lurkin sitting on their board. Is it because they're there doing the day-to-day work? No, but they identify with it, and they want to help out, and they lend their money toward the cost. So clearly, we don't have the right board right now. And are we going to get Michael Moore to be on the board of this building? No, but there's a lot of people that have a lot of influence, and a lot of connections, that love the arts, that probably love this building, or quickly learn to love this building, that could be on that board. But we haven't identified them, we haven't approached them, they have to come out. But that's where we need to get here. But that's where we need to get here. So I agree with you a hundred percent. We don't have that. And that's what we need. We need that engaged community board that's well-connected.
I've been listening to these conversations for twenty years. Yes. Just a quick background thing. The millions of dollars that went into this building, that was falling apart, were because there were people in the community who had been here in their youth, either as boxers or playing the M.R.A. upstairs, or in theaters, or dance, or something. And when they called and asked for them to try to help restore the building, they stepped up. And the plaque that's on this side of the pillar is typical. I'm going to just read it to you. The Over the Hill Gang. And I can't read all of their names right now, because my eyes are there, but anyway, they volunteered to restore all the woodwork in the Hardy Hall. It was a bunch of guys from a church or church. And many of these pieces were missing. And they made them, and did it, and made their time and their money. And also, when we were writing grants for restoring it, we could get brick and mortar grants. Those are hard to come by now. You know, needs are first in line. And I'm part of the hundred women in the building. And I have made a pitch to the Ramsdale four different times, and each time I've been up against something like love, ink, or people, women need these things. Even ham needs these. And that's where the money has been going. We also, because of friends of the Ramsdale, which is what it evolved into, we used to send what I call a begging letter to the people who they had given before. But some of our farmers don't ask, either have their name on something, but they can walk in this building and take pride in what they donated to restore. And we don't have that today on board. They can't, they won't give money just to turn the heat on. That's not very glamorous, and they can't do it in others' name or something like that. We have talked about fundraise, and we did one a year ago, and we did a performance on the stage, followed by a high tea. And we made a certain amount of money, but not enough to fill the gap of the amount of money the city has to put in. And just one fundraiser isn't going to do that. It has to be some ongoing things, and different ways of doing it. And we're lucky that we have the Metropolitan Opera, because thanks to Mary Payne, who called me all excited about it, and she had, was going to do it in Florida, and the theater there, and the vaults, and that is on the right path to doing that. And it's a wonderful thing for people who don't drive at night anymore, and for opera lovers. Marvelly, they don't let anybody within sixty miles do it in a good estate theater desert. But we were able to do it through a free-standing opera house, and that is very impressive. So everybody's doing it. And we have varying tenants for that. Mike, what does the average?
We can be government support as well. And it's a very complicated situation. Otherwise, we could have an answer for it, right? But we definitely need more people. But as an organization, we struggle like any nonprofit does. So we could use more volunteers, we could use more money, et cetera, et cetera. But I feel also like we're on a holding pattern until there's a real specific plan in place. We can't just give up everything to it when there's nothing on the horizon. You know what I mean? We have to work as a business now. We have to continue doing what we do right now until there's actually something we can wrap our minds around. You know what I mean? So until this request for proposal is done, and we get some real concrete direction here, I don't, you know, we're not digging our heels in, we're just waiting. We're in the holding pattern here. So, you know, and I just want to state that, you know, we love this building. We are here for this building and for the arts. I think the girl said it so true. The arts are the passion, it's the breadth of communities, and without it, we wouldn't have successful people, because they're all very creative, you know, and no matter what they do. So I think, I just wanted to say that, that our support is here, you know, and we're just waiting.
I'm Nancy Swanson. I'm one of the volunteers for M.A.S.T. with players, and I've been here a long time. So a couple of things come to mind. One is that when the building was, as you said, less than pristine shape about twenty-five years ago, I remember that the city and the city players had good partners in some of the organizations in town, such as Rotary, such as the Coannis Club. I remember one of the clubs first put a doorway through so that this side was connected with the other side. There was no entryway at the front of the complex. So one of the clubs did that. Another thing they did was to install some more bathrooms, because there were about two in the building. So, you know, we have a connection with the community that needs to maybe be fired up again when there is, as Joanne said, a cohesive plan. But number two, I'm one of the tour guides here, and last year during Slay Dell weekend, I know because I was the one here both days, because as she said, we need more volunteers, we had a hundred people in six hours' time touring this building. And I get to see the looks on their faces when they come in. They come in and they're somewhat impressed by the outside of the building, the lobby, and then you take them inside the theater and they go, wow. I mean, from little kids to older folk who've been in theater themselves or have enjoyed going. And I tell them stories about what has happened on the stage, and what kind of performances have gone on here. M.A.S.T. players dance as well. They get to go through here and see the artwork, and they are impressed. And I say, where are you from? They're from all over. They come here, and as you said, this is a destination. And I get to see that when I give a tour, and it's really amazing. So if you want to know what that's like sometime, follow on. If you do have a bus tour come through, or just individuals come through during one of the weekends, especially weekends.
We have great tour guides.
I'm Diana Monfitch. I'm a affiliate who we met on the M.A.I. And I just want to tell you that the M.A.I. is so positive about the arts. Everyone on our board is so pro-art, as a former art teacher, you know, I include myself in that, and as a hopeful artist now. But we really want to be positive about this whole situation. But it seems that we are stuck. I don't even know if the proposal for this, this plan, the seventy thousand to twenty-three thousand, is going to be approved. Is there any indication? Who's going to make that?
The grant board, I think. The board will make that, assuming that there's funding. We've already had, we've already had a significant amount of donations, but they've got to give that threshold for the magic grant.
So we still are waiting there too. And does this grant help? It helps us, obviously. I've heard of marketing a lot. Does it help us with organizing this governance thing, which seems to be the problem?
Just, we just go back a couple of slides here. The goals of the marketing study are to analyze the market for what we want, to perform an analysis for definitive business model, to determine realistic estimates for fundraising, which is critical, and to have a recommended governance structure. So those are the four key things, which is kind of what we want to talk about, I think.
This governance does, as you know, I was on the Strategic Planning Committee, and really, the last three items that we were supposed to deal with, one of them was not governance. It should have been, but our leadership didn't designate that. So it came kind of out of changing, the committee itself changed their, what they were supposed to be working on to governance. And then when we had our first follow-up meeting, Mitch brought in a governance chart, which none of us really agreed with, and we worked on it a little bit. But that nice picture that he's showing us really, that didn't come from the strategic planning. It just, you know, we felt as if we didn't have enough say in that. It wasn't even one of the designated opinions we were supposed to talk about. But I agree, it has to be done.
One of the things, our, the study wasn't that particularly high, but it did absolutely recognize the governance need for these structures.
But it wasn't one of the last three specific.
No, it wasn't one of the, it wasn't one of the.
That's right. Mike's committee changed his to governance. Right.
I will say though, that the governance has got us to this point, because we all voted to get us here. So I don't think the governance is broken. I just think that we need more people and more diverse types of people to make very important decisions. I still personally feel we need representative, representatives, and it doesn't have to be me, but from each organized, strong organization, because I think they need to be there, because they are the pulse. You know, we don't just have people from the community. It has to be diverse, right? And that would make it even more diverse, I feel. So, but, you know, it does have to be addressed, definitely.
Well, and I second that point that Joanne did, mainly because if somebody has never been involved in a production of any sort of theater field, if they come in the front door and they only watch, they don't know what goes into creating a show within two months' time, for instance. All the people involved backstage, and what space you need, and so forth and so on. So I would agree that having somebody with that understanding would be important to a board, knowing about that, what goes into that.
Anyone else that's ready to wrap this up? Any other comments from council?
Do you have anything? Mr. Carey, have you got anything more to say about what do you like to be addressed, addressed a body?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to say something? Continue anything?
I would like to say, thank you all for coming out and your input. This is an ongoing conversation. This is a conversation that we've had beginning and ending, and it's time for some of us to step up and take some action, make some decisions. You know, you don't have to be right all the time. You know, make decisions, do some change if it doesn't work. Making others is a change depending. But I think everyone agrees we can't just go in and act like we're working. So we need to do some change.
I'll take one more.
I just want to say, I certainly support the ransom, because I had a major part in my first Ramsdale Theater play seventy-five years ago. So I'm well aware of what's been going on for the last seventy-five years, and I don't want to see us lose it. Please help us out.
I'd like to thank Ed for an excellent presentation. I'd like to thank our partners for speaking out, and the help our citizens just put in there tonight, and the big part of the process.
Also, I want to thank the audience for some great ideas, how they helped the Ramsdale out. So thank you for having me.
And thanks, everyone, especially Ed for the presentation and responding to many of the comments. I think everybody's read on, at least we need to do something, we need to move forward. And it's good to see all the passions, and it's good to hear that the community wants us and wants to see it thrive. So I do appreciate you guys all coming out here this evening and listening to the presentation and providing your comments. Thank you.
This is what the funding structure would look like, and we'll get to that later and build it down.
Sure. Yeah, and you've already created that one chart.
I just.
Right, we could just, we could just add that to it.
Perfect.
Insert it.
The part that comes out of the capital improvement should, you say something in there that it's, it's part of the oil and gas, just to let the people know that, you know, oil and gas. They agree that.
Proceeds.
And we've got the word hybrid in here someplace, right?
I thought so.
We'll make sure it gets in. I don't think I have the word hybrid. I thought I ran it in there somewhere. Well, maybe it isn't.
I think that was in your budget, I would agree on that.
Get all that sent?
No.
We need to.
Good thing, thank you.
You got it.
Okay. Yeah, it would be hard to catch all that. Yeah. Side conversations.
Lots of people talking.
So give us a chance to, to make these changes, email them back out to everyone, make a hard copy for you, make a hard copy for you. Anyone else want a hard copy?
Yes, I would.
A hard copy for you. I'll just take a hard copy. You don't want a hard copy?
I didn't figure out my computer.
Right. Hard copy?
Oh, sure.
You okay with the other?
I'll take it on the front.
I guess I just have one question. How does the three council members feel about this committee and the work we've, that has been done?
I joined the committee to begin with because I believed in it. We need to try to find some industries. Having first, having firsthand knowledge now, of being able to look at some of the projects and what's going on, I consider it rather comfortable.
I believe it's a challenge. It's something that the council strongly has to look at, and I think the recommendations have all been sound here. And without answering for the rest of the council, I mean, it's something to be discussed and try to look for the two percent, and try to move forward, and try to do something with it. Yes, I'm in agreement with it, but how we're all going to formulate this with other challenges that are before us, I don't know. And I don't want to answer for the rest of the council. But yes, it's been interesting, and I believe this is something that we should try to move forward with.
I've learned an awful lot from listening to the members talk and the perceptions, and how hard that everybody's worked to try to find a penny. They've worked pretty hard at it, and there's been some money identified.
Yeah. Well, you know. Yeah, there's some slack, but got to be careful what you're asking for.
This should have been started fifty years ago.
Oh, yes.
You can't blame it on the council for not doing anything in the last, you know, twenty years. I think this should have been started fifty years ago, and I think Jeff had, had one of the recommendations from the city manager there, and it never, never happened, but I think this is a great place to start.
You know, one of the things I, looking back on, that I think honest citizens are aware of today, that we had all these sewer separation projects, there was a lot of money that was used to repair the streets. It didn't have to be in the budget. Now that money has gone away, and there's nothing left. So you're trying to put money back in the budget that hasn't been there for years.
Sure.
And that's hard to do.
Money that, money that's correct, and then you throw on top of that thirty million dollars of bond debt it took to separate the sewers. So that debt is still there, that's being carried by the community. Not, not much of that debt is on your utilities, not clearly, we know that. But still, it's debt nonetheless. So just a question.
It's always the time to add a new item to the budget when your budget, you know, your available funds hasn't increased, because you have to take it from somewhere else.
Yeah, that's true.
But it's always easier if you already have some money budgeted to add a percent next year. But when you don't have it there to begin with.
It's hard to get in.
It's hard to get in, because you've got to find, you know, and that's, I think that's where we're finding ourselves today. I mean, a lot of street work was done, but it was using different funds to get it done.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your time today. Jerick, just a quick question. Congratulations, Jill. I just want to say, Jeff, thank you to you and your department for the ice skating.
Yes. Hundred and fifty kids so far, and great.
Made a lot of ice this morning.
The eighteen minutes below zero, I bet you did.
Did anybody get checked over the boards, Ed, when I did? Did I have to call rescue by? Not yet.
Not going to worry.
It always happens. It's the way that goes. Because they're going to get checked over the board there, or get check action that they're going. We know that the City of Huntington, except for we have to double-check on how much they contract with the equalization department for that, so we can easily find that information out for that. And we know that their cost is roughly thirty-one thousand dollars to their contractor, and... and they have about $30,000 of in-house costs with staffing to assist with that. So we know what that cost is. We know with Boeing City, for example, for example, that their cost is roughly $55,000 for that. So I think this, you can, and that's the reason we indicated, we're not gonna know entirely what the exact cost is until we complete an RFP. But I think you can, I think you can get some pretty accurate assumptions as to what the parameters are gonna be with contract assessing from looking at our neighbors.
So if we do an RFP, we're only gonna be doing it for contract assessing, right? We can't, we can't do an RFP for both and just see what comes in best, like for the citizens?
No, I'm not following you.
We do an RFP, we do a job description. We wanna know what, we wanna tell people what, what we need, what we require. We're only gonna do it for the contract people. See, but we want a contract. We're not gonna be considering the assessor, the in-house assessor?
That's a decision that council is being asked to make, is which direction that they want staff to move forward to in building out of the budget.
Okay, so if we decide, and I apologize, I'm just trying to get it clear. If we decide to go with a, a contract assess, if you decide to do a job description for a contract assessor, we're not even gonna look at an in-house assessor. We're not gonna look at the cost.
Sure. If council, if council provides direction for staff, that they want us to create an RFP to contract out of assessing, yes, I would not, I would, I probably would not research what the costs were associated with doing an in-house staff member, because that's what we're looking for. We're looking for the direction. If council provides the direction, prepare the RFP, and at the same time, go out and research what the cost would be for a level-two in-house assessor, then, then that's what we would do.
How will we compare them if we knew both of them? Or we're assuming that the contract, because well, it looks like it's gonna be cheaper, but do we really know that?
Do you want it? I, I think the bigger question is, do we want that? Man, I think, I think realistically, we know that contract assessing is gonna be less expensive than having an in-house assessor. Even, even if you, even if you remove the cost.